I'd like to welcome everyone to today's hearing in the Rules and Reference Committee. I chair that committee. I'd like to recognize my colleagues that are here for this important hearing regarding ethics, and I know some will still be rolling in. Also like to recognize our speakers today, Professor Emeritus, Dr. Herb Asher, State Representative Mike Curtin, and Brian Clark from the Mayor's Office, to talk about these proposals. We will also accept speaker slips. There's blue pieces of paper right over in the corner there. You can fill those out and hand them to John Oswald. John will take those. And we'll take speaker slips right up to the very end. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to speak, who wishes to speak. Last October, Mayor Ginther and I announced proposals to strengthen our ethics laws and make some of them, some of the toughest ethics laws facing municipalities in the state. And over the past few months, we've considered feedback from the other members of the working group, including State Representative Mike Curtin, Dr. Herb Asher, and will now consider these proposals as legislation and seek feedback from the public through this public hearing. There's essentially three pillars of this legislation, the first being lobbyist registration, which will be significantly expanded and match the more rigorous requirements required by the state of Ohio. The second will be an ethics disclosure requirement for elected officials. Currently, state ethics laws require one disclosure for all elected officials. The city of Columbus, under the proposed legislation, will require two disclosures. And then number three will be a brighter light on campaign finance. People will know who is financing the campaigns for elected officials, and it will be easier through, hopefully, a searchable database that we'll be looking to create for folks, the public, elected officials, and members of the media, to be able to search in an easy format similar to what's provided by the Secretary of State's office of who is financing campaigns or issue campaigns within the city of Columbus. I'd like to offer the opportunity for any of my colleagues, prior to getting into State Representative Mike Curtin's testimony and comments. Do any of my colleagues like to say anything? I'd just like to note that there's nothing more important to me personally, not only as Council President, but just as a member of this body or a resident of the city of Columbus, than ethics reform and ethics itself. We live in a representative democracy, and belief in government is at the bedrock of our faith in government. So we take this very, very seriously. I personally take it very seriously. And I'd like to thank Mr. Curtin and Mr. Asher for spearheading the efforts and helping us get in the right direction as we try to reform city ethics laws to go above and beyond, in many instances, what's currently required across the state of Ohio. State Representative Mike Curtin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Klein, members of council. As Council President Klein just mentioned, on October 8th, then-Council President Ginther laid out three policy proposals that were just referenced by Council President Klein. At that October 8th press conference, when these proposals were laid out, then-Council President Ginther asked Dr. Asher, myself, and Attorney Marshall Moore to serve as a committee of three, to act as sort of an oversight committee, if you will, to ensure that those three policy proposals were put into proposed ordinance format so that hearings such as today's could commence for public input. Council President Ginther, at the time, also asked us to make any other recommendations that we thought would be prudent to put Columbus on the course toward having a model ethics governance framework. Marshall Moore was not able to participate because she had taken a new employment opportunity right about the same time that this committee was being formed. So Dr. Asher and I served as a committee of two, and on December 21st of 2015, we delivered a memo along these lines to then-Mayor-elect Ginther and to administration and council staff. In that memo, we basically said that we think these three proposals were a very good start, and with every confidence they would be enacted into city ordinance with perhaps some amendments if council thought they were appropriate, once public input could be solicited from the many people interested in this topic. We believe the three proposals are substantive and that there will be tremendous public interest in their enactment and in the operation of them. We also said in the memo that we thought the third proposal requiring city officials to establish a model ethics policy would be enhanced by having the city retain, for a specified period of time, an outside consultant with recognized expertise in the field of best practices in ethics governance at the city level. We noted that the field of ethics governance has expanded tremendously in recent years, producing a number of recognized experts nationally who could provide objective, independent analysis of the city's existing ethics governance framework and how it compares and contrasts with peer cities, and perhaps make recommendations for further reform. Dr. Asher and I were assisted in our review by David Freel, an attorney who served as Executive Director of the Ohio Ethics Commission from 1994 to 2010. Mr. Freel helped us identify a number of ethics governance experts nationally who might be able to serve in the role of consultant, should the city council deem that meritorious. Dr. Asher and I said in our memo, we do believe Columbus would benefit from the hiring of an outside expert to help create the first-ever benchmarking report for the city, to show the city and to show the public how our city's ethics practices compare and contrast with those of peer cities, and allow a continuing community dialogue on what constitutes best practices ethics framework. That was the sum and substance of our report, Council President Klein, members of council, and we feel privileged to have had the opportunity to submit it.
Thank you, Representative Curtin. If I could just ask a question related to the outside expert that you're recommending this, so I understand the recommendation from you and Dr. Asher. Is it, are you recommending that the city council, in conjunction with the administration, work to identify an expert identified by Mr. Freel? Or is this something that we should consider doing a request for proposals on? What's your recommendation? And how would you envision an RFP looking, because it's for benchmarking our current law, assuming this passes in whatever form it passes in, comparing us to our peer cities of where we stand in certain levels of ethics and ethics oversight?
Council President Klein, in addition to the formal memo that we provided, I passed along to administration and council staff the names and the contact information for a number of people nationally that David Freel recommended. He identified a handful, four or five, I want to say, of people who he thought, in the field of ethics governance, were top of line, top of class, if you will. I don't know if they are available or which of them might be available. We did not attempt to identify one person. We did, with Mr. Freel's help, identify a group of people who he felt, in his more than 30 years in this field, were top of class and could serve as an independent, if you will, you know, an independent barometer, independent yardstick for where Columbus is relative to the rest of the country. So we did not identify anybody. Should our assistance be needed to help further, you know, that review process, we'd be happy to do whatever we can. Whether or not it's an RFP, or whether or not it's a negotiated contract, I would have to say would be an issue for the city attorney's office. I wouldn't presume to go there and to know what the best practice would be for retaining such an expert.
Thank you, Representative Curtin. Any questions or comments from my colleagues for Representative Curtin before we move to Brian Clark for presentation of the substance of what's being proposed? Seeing none, thank you, Representative Curtin. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark? Thank you for participating in this hearing. I'm going to turn the floor over to you, in hopes that you're able to walk us through the presentation of the three kind of buckets, for lack of better description, of where the reform is being proposed. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Klein, Council President Protem Tyson, and members of council. On behalf of Mayor Ginther, I'd like to thank each of you for partnering with us on this important legislation. I'd like to thank John Oswald with the Legislative Research Office for his invaluable help in drafting this legislation, Josh Cox with the City Attorney's Office for his expertise in legal review, and, as you've mentioned, State Representative Mike Curtin and Professor Herb Asher for their insight and for their thoughtfulness throughout this process. This last October, as then-Council President Ginther looked at this legislation, made this recommendation, really two guiding principles that we considered, and the first is transparency, the second is accountability. These are the bedrocks of our democracy. They are key to the legitimacy of our government, and I believe that we, working together, have done a very good job with these three pieces of legislation in embodying those principles. The first piece of legislation would increase transparency for legislative agents here in the city of Columbus. In 2006, the city of Columbus enacted a legislative agent registry. We do have an opportunity to expand on who is required to register with the city of Columbus, as well as how frequently they provide information to the city clerk. So this legislation would mirror state law definitions for who has to register as a legislative agent, and would include anyone who lobbies a city elected official or department, again following state law definition for that individual. The second would require a new disclosure report for registered lobbyists, increasing the number of annual reports to three, to the city clerk. And then finally, it would increase penalties for violations of city code in this regard. The second piece of legislation deals directly with ethics for elected officials. I believe in the city of Columbus, we've already passed tougher ethics laws than the state, whether it's changes to our charter in November of 2014, establishing prohibited uses of public funds, and enhancing transparency for contracts and legislation that comes before council. We are recommending additional next steps to increase ethics disclosure and transparency for elected officials in Columbus. The first would require a new semi-annual financial disclosure form for all city elected officials, in addition to the current filing required by the Ohio Ethics Commission. In addition to other state law requirements, this code change would require city officials to provide a description of the gifts that they receive, rather than simply the fact that they have received a gift from someone that exceeded a certain threshold, in this case, $75. Each office holder would be required to establish an ethics policy, and more importantly, engage in annual ethics training for themselves and identified staff in their office. Each office holder would have to designate an ethics officer to help coordinate these efforts within their office. And then lastly, penalties for violation of this finance disclosure law would be increased for city elected officials. The last piece is campaign finance. So 2003, city council passed an ordinance that went above and beyond state requirements for campaign finance disclosure for candidates for municipal office. We have an opportunity to go a step farther and frankly fill some of the gaps that exist in the current state filing calendar. To give an example, last year, during the municipal election, there was no filing from the post-primary filing until the pre-general filing. So there were essentially three months, the heart of a general election campaign, when voters did not have information about who was supporting which candidates. So this would require two additional campaign finance disclosure reports. In election years, candidates would file a total of nine reports. Five would be required by the state, and four would be required by city code. In non-election years, candidates would require, be required to file four reports. Two would be required by the state, and two by the city. And then the city clerk would work with the Franklin County Board of Elections to create an online database of all of these filings, so that any citizen use agency would have the ability to easily search that information. So thank you for the opportunity to present on this proposed ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do you have a copy of the legislation in front of you?
I do.
On the legislative agent disclosure, on page four, it looks like it's B1, just so I understand this correctly, that the triggering of the legislative, of the trickling of the registration for a legislative agent is within 10 days of engaging a client? So does that mean, once there is an engagement between a potential lobbyist and a client, that the lobbyist then would have 10 days to register that specific client with the city?
That is correct.
Okay. And what guidance, this is my last question before I turn it over to my colleagues for questioning, but on the description of gift, has the administration, in conjunction with the city attorney's office, any conversation with the Ohio Ethics Commission, or with any other groups, when it comes to the description of a gift? How descriptive, you know, if you get a hat, is it orange hat, or is it just hat? Like, at what level is the, are you envisioning the description to be made?
Council President Klein, I think that's a great question, and that's something that I believe the state has grappled with, and part of why we don't have this guidance from the state. This would really come down to the way the code is written, which simply requires a description that would allow the average person to know exactly what the gift was. I don't think you'd have to give the color of the hat, but maybe who gave it, and possibly even a value, if you wanted to provide that information. I think that it would be incumbent upon the independently elected office holders in Columbus to work together on the ethics policies for their respective offices and address this issue in the ethics policy.
More questions may arise. I'll reserve those as they come up, but at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to my colleagues for any questions from Mr. Clark. President Protem Tyson?
Thank you, President Klein. So, Brian, with the, in terms of the gift, so basically, you just write, gift is not the value of the gift, or just it's still over $75? And just put the name of the person's name that gave you the gift, and like a hat, this is his hat. So would it be Mr. Brian Clark, Clark hat, and do we put the amount, or is just Pat Clark, and we're assuming it's over $75?
Council President Protem Tyson, that's a great question. This would simply add to the current requirements of state law. The state law trigger is $75 or more, or in aggregate, over the course of a year, for gifts, and it would require you to list the source of the gift. The assumption is that it's over $75, and then a description of what the gift was. So for example, if the gift were two tickets to the ballet, list that as the description of the gift.
Thank you.
Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Thank you, Council President Klein. Actually, any, Mr. Clark, Rep. Curtin, or Dr. Asher, you could, any of you can feel free to address this, but I'm interested specifically in the ethics policy section. And maybe this is something that actually, one of the recommendations from David Freel could help us tease out, but it asks that, or it mandates that office holders craft their own ethics policy for their office and designate an ethics officer, ethics coordinator. Can you talk a little bit more about the purpose for that, whether you see the ethics officer, you know, having any liability? I know campaign treasurers have actual liability to finance violations, so I'd like to hear a little more detail about that.
Looks like I can take that one, Councilmember Brown. So I'll speak first to the ethics policy. The Ohio Ethics Commission has provided a model ethics policy for local governments. That provides a very good sort of basis for the policies that we would recommend developing here in the independently elected offices in city government. Again, I think it's our belief that these offices will work in coordination to make sure that there is continuity between offices on this particular policy. With regard to the ethics officer, I believe I would view that more as an advisory and administrative position. One of the key pieces of this ordinance is making sure that we enhance the amount of ethics training that we're all receiving here at the city of Columbus. Currently, an elected office holder has to complete the training once during their term of office. So you could imagine that over the course of two terms, as many as seven years could pass for that ethics training. What we'd like to see is that annual training, and it would be great to have a person in the office making sure that that's happening. With regard to questions regarding, you know, ethics policy, we generally mirror state law, and the Ethics Commission, I think, would be the appropriate body to provide informal or formal advisory opinions on particular ethics issues.
Thank you.
And I'd like just to make a note on that, and then I'll get you to recognize President Protem Tyson, because in the efforts of dealing with the changes to city code as it relates to ethics oversight, our final arbiter is still going to be the Ohio Ethics Commission. So any sort of independent analysis or recommendations from the city attorney, or a third party of what is permissible and not permissible, is great guidance, but the final arbiter, I guess the buck will stop, with the Ohio Ethics Commission. So regardless of whatever advice is rendered to us, if it does not come directly from the Ohio Ethics Commission, then it's not guidance that is binding. It'd be only guidance that's discretionary and just guidance at that. So I know as we, as we try to tackle these issues that deal with transparency, that deal with accountability as it relates to the ethics disclosure requirement, regardless of what is in city code that goes above and beyond, any sort of advice that we get from any sort of outside counsel that's ultimately not the Ohio Ethics Commission is just advice, because it's going to be the Ohio Ethics Commission that is going to have the final say whether that advice is right or wrong. I'm sure maybe the Ethics Commission will take into account that you listened to the advice, but it's ultimately going to be their call of whether laws were broken or not broken. President Protem Tyson?
Yes, I was just going to share, just, I know Mr. Clark just mentioned that, from the Ethics Commission, we may have only had training, you know, once every term, but I just want to state that, as Columbus City Council, that every year, we have ethics training, and the ethics training is done by the Ohio Ethics Commission. So just want to make that point, that we're not waiting every, you know, only once every four years to be trained in ethics. Thank you. Which is what this is, this is just clarifying that in this document. Thank you.
Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to follow up on the each independently elected office holder appointing someone. So me, as a council member, having two staff, one of my staff person would be deemed my representative to, is that how you envision it? Or us, as a council, would have one staff person that would help lead us? How do you, how in the legislation is that?
Councilmember Harden, I think another great question, and probably a place where we'll need to go back and amend this ordinance to be clear. I think the expectation would be that the officers of city council, although independently elected, would ideally have a single point of contact for ethics issues, rather than each individual office having a person. So I think that's a point well taken, and a place that we'll want to amend this ordinance to clarify it.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go with Councilmember Sensiano, and then Councilmember Page.
Thanks, President Klein. And actually, to follow up on that, when you're saying each, could each office have the same person, not just council, but the mayor, council, city attorney? Does it all have to be, or is envisioned as drafted to be four separate individuals? Could it be one individual?
Councilmember Sensiano, I think that there's certainly the flexibility there. The code is not prescriptive about where that individual has to be housed, or that it be separate individuals.
Councilmember Page?
Thank you, President Klein. Also, just following along with that same section, there, for like the financial disclosure, there's a penalty section, but for this particular ethics policy, there is no penalty section that I saw, and it is a shill. Do you see there being a penalty if an elected officer does not appoint a person from their office?
Councilmember Page, that's a great question, and one that we have not considered. So that's certainly something that we could look into. There would be other state law remedies for failure to, you know, to follow the requirements of the code, but certainly something worth discussing.
Thank you, President Klein. I did want to thank the administration, President Klein, for your leadership on these provisions. I know it's tough to kind of figure out what the state's saying, adopt at municipal level. And my research to the proposals, and thank you both, Representative Curtin and Dr. Asher. Are you aware of any other Ohio municipalities taking kind of this boots-and-suspenders approach, going above and beyond? I haven't found any, I'm just curious if, and I know we talked about benchmarking like cities, but what else may be occurring in Ohio? Because I, from what I can tell, we are going above and beyond, and, you know, I applaud the mayor and President Klein for leading that charge.
Councilmember Sensiano, so in working with State Representative Curtin and the members of the Charter Review Commission, that's exactly something that we looked into. That's what led to a couple of holes being closed here in the city of Columbus. One of them was enhancing penalties in the charter for violation of state law with regards to ethics. That's something that the voters of Columbus overwhelmingly supported. That led us closing a loophole in state law that applied to charter municipalities and prohibited uses of public funds. That's something that council has since acted on, and we go above and beyond other cities, and clearly spelling out the appropriate uses of taxpayer funds. The only governmental entity that I'm aware of that has done something similar to this is the Cuyahoga County Council and their council charter. And certainly after the challenges that they faced, there was an enhanced focus on this, and I think that they have some similar provisions, some that are very unique to their situation as well.
Thank you, President Klein. Not to jump around too much, but under the legislative agent ordinance draft, one thing that popped up to me was on E2, the clerk is required to mention that it's a misdemeanor of the first degree, but then under Section G, the penalty is a misdemeanor of the third degree. Just curious if, what penalty we may be seeking, if there's, you know, and drafting and drafting, we didn't get it synced up, but just curious what penalty we would really be looking for? Is it first degree, third degree?
So, Councilmember Sensiano, I believe that we would be looking at a G for the penalty in this section, which is enhancing the penalty from a misdemeanor of the fourth degree to misdemeanor of the third degree. This is something that we'll need to work closely with the city attorney's office to make sure that we have harmonized our code with state law requirements in this regard.
Any other questions about my colleagues? Any other, yes, Councilmember Mitch Brown?
President Klein, Mr. Curtin or Mr. Asher, can you elaborate a little more what David Freel was suggesting with regards to the role of an outside expert in the area of governance with regards to ethics?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilman. I think it's a very important question, and our thought is that what you're really looking for is acquiring the services of an expert who will really come back and sort of report in an informational sense what's out there, what's out there in municipalities throughout the country. We do not see this person coming back and making a specific set of recommendations that says, thou shalt do this, or not do this, or whatever, but rather as a resource, because the whole issue of ethics legislation and ethics reform is actually a much broader issue throughout the country right now. And so we thought it was a very, very efficient way to build upon the proposals that you have before you today, which are very good proposals, and actually move the city forward. But there are a lot of other issues out there, and rather than sort of letting them come up piecemeal or whatever, having some expert do this review, do this benchmarking, and then come back and inform the council, this is what's out there. And it's almost sort of a menu of options for the council to look at, or not look at, for that matter. So I think that really is the purpose, and not to have the person come back in a very prescriptive way and say, this is the way you have to go. Communities differ dramatically. Communities have different cultures. Localities have different forms of government. They have different histories. So really having somebody who has a sense of what's out there, and also what seems to work, what doesn't work, what works in intended ways, what kinds of proposals have unintended consequences, we think that would be a very useful resource and information base for the council and the city to have.
Just to add a postscript on that, Councilmember Brown, most of us who've been in the public arena arena for a long time are familiar with Mr. Freel, since he was Executive Director of the Ohio Ethics Commission for about 25, 26 years. He was a natural resource to go to, because he knows who his counterparts are nationally. Dr. Asher and I felt that, given all the questions that have swirled around City Hall over the last year-plus, that having an independent review, an outside of City Hall review, would be as good a faith effort as a city could make, to go consult somebody who is, whose credentials are unquestioned. And so we went to Mr. Freel first, asked him if he'd be available, and he wasn't. He's teaching a full course load at Ohio State in the Fisher College, both at the undergraduate and graduate level. But he said, look, if you're interested in who I consider to be the best of the best out there, I will be happy to compile a list. He did so. There were five or six names with contact information, people from New York to San Francisco who have done this work, who in his estimation is top of class, and not that that's an exhaustive list by any means, but that information was conveyed to the mayor's office and to Councilmember Klein's office.
Thank you. I'm very, very familiar with David Freel, known him for a long, long time, and take his recommendations with the highest regard. So thank you.
Council President Klein, first, I'd like to say on behalf of the administration that we very much appreciate the recommendations from State Representative Curtin and Professor Asher. That's something that we look forward to exploring with them and with this council. Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues before we get to speakers? Again, there's blue slips over in the corner by the TV camera. If anyone would like to speak, feel, please feel free to fill out a speaker slip and give it to Mr. Oswald in the white shirt to my left, and we'll entertain as many speaker slips are, that are before us, to make sure that everyone gets an opportunity to do so. Right now, we have approximately five or six, and we call them the order received, and each speaker will have three minutes. The drill will be for the speaker to identify himself or herself, and any organizations that he or she represents, and then the clock will start, and we welcome the testimony. The first person to sign up is Kathleen Wolf. Welcome to council.
Do I come up here?
Yes, ma'am, come right up here.
My name's Kathleen Wolf. I live at 2482 Billingsley Road, across from the car dealerships, and I represent my fellow residents and homeowners. There are seven of us across the street from the Byers Mazda Subaru, and what I'm trying to show here from accountability and transparency is that our proposed rezoning is just one example of how ethics and accountability issues affect actual homeowners. We're one of very few neighborhoods, directly, residential neighborhoods, directly across the street from dealerships. And there was a rezoning of the Toban dealership where they're not across from residences, but they were allowed to take away green space, that if you go down Billingsley, you'll see lots of green space and trees that was committed for many, many years, and then in the previous 2012 rezoning by the Byers Group was committed to. So in this case, I'd just like to draw attention, first of all, the city's notification process didn't really follow the state's rules, in that none of us, only two of us received notification of a June hearing, a few of us received the July hearing, all of which were voted to just sort of, everyone unanimously approve this rezoning. And we know that, and I'm not being critical, the Byers have been trying to work with us on some of these issues, but we, there is no representation for residents in situations like this. The legislation was tabled and tabled indefinitely, and I have here copies for each of you. We actually typed the transcripts of the two hearings where we spoke, and I have copies of them, because it shows how the lawyers for the Byers were asked, the lawyer was asked to meet with us to resolve all of these issues. I question, when these are large donors, and it's not just the one dealership, but what happened at Toban is now the precedent for what happens at Byers, and taking away all of our green space, putting in the parking areas will be the precedent for the next three dealers down the line. There are only, and then the 125-yard foot rule of people notified, only a few residents are involved or even possibly notified, and then whatever follows on that ends up being the next residents down the line. I think the city really needs to look at having advocacy for residents, and also we were, and we appreciate that the last, that the council, then council, appointed Jeffrey Brown, the lawyer, to work with us, but he has a conflict of interest in that he's representing the Byers, and we don't always know. For example, we had serious issues of the lighting that goes into our properties, of the drainage that goes into our properties. The city has also made improvements to the drainage on the commercial side, but has doing nothing about all the water that flows from these driveways into our yards. There are a lot of issues, and I don't want to go on and on about the special issues. What I'm trying to say is, when we look at accountability, there has to be a way to draw attention, because when we were notified, we were told by Eliza Thrush, they used the addresses that were in the application prepared by the Byers applicant and their lawyers, and all of those addresses were not correct. We also didn't receive the notice a couple of days before the hearing. So there's a question of legal process with these notices, as well as, you know, for many of these issues involving residents, who can help us? Because with this re-tableing, someone from the city can just say, well, we think everything's been agreed to, because the lawyers say everything's fine, but we have no way for residents to speak on these issues, or be involved with someone who's from our city council representatives.
Thank you for your testimony. It seemed to me that the thrust of your commentary has to do with the notification and zoning process and correct addresses for within the 125-foot notification requirement for a potential zoning issue before city council.
And also the council's appointing the lawyer for the applicant to be working with the residents and having no one to work with.
I was at that hearing where it was tabled, and I recall this issue, and that, as we do many times, it's not so much appointing the lawyer to represent the neighborhood as much as because the lawyer is representing the client, to have the client and the lawyer work with the affected groups to make a difference. What I'd like to do, if it's okay with the chair of our zoning, who's Jaisa Page, and Gina, can you grab the documentation that Ms. Wolf has? Is, I know Ms. Page is passionate about zoning, which is why she wanted to chair zoning, and so I'm sure these issues will be something that she would like to take up and with folks from her office to address with you offline, how we can strengthen our zoning code to make sure that there is the accountability for notification that you're requiring.
Thank you, and I think that the fact that these are very large lobbies, not only the legal representation, but all the dealerships together, and we're seven little homeowners, that this should shed a light, that there is some issue of transparency here, especially when stuff is tabled and moved forward, or actually believed to have been approved, and we're not involved.
I understand that, and I think that the evidence that it was tabled indefinitely due to you coming to council and advocating on behalf of your neighborhoods is evidence that we heard your voice, and we appreciate your commentary.
We thank you so very much.
Thank you. The next is Mr. Jonathan Beard. Sure. Ms. Space, can you grab that for Mr. Beard?
Council President Klein, members of the council, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is John Beard. I'm with the Columbus Coalition for Responsive Government and the Columbus Action Network. I sat here today, and of the things I heard, really the one thing that really struck me as being most important was to have an outside expert come and review this. You know, quite honestly, with all the allegations of public corruption and ethical violations here, I honestly don't think council's in a position to credibly propose ethics reform at this point in time. And I'm kind of, I looked at this proposal, and I was kind of like, what I'll say is that the people have been far ahead of council on these issues for many years. In your packet, you'll see evidence going back to 1993, when, under Cindy Lazarus' leadership, the citizens passed a charter amendment in 1994 that allowed caps on contributions to city campaigns. That was never enacted by council. So, you know, you'll also see evidence of three citizen-initiated proposals in 2011, 2001, 2014, and then 2015, where citizens are proposing campaign, publicly funded campaigns. Again, we don't see that in this proposal, and I think, you know, what I would propose is that we get an expert in here to start to look at, you know, the landscape of what's out there, and expand that a little bit, because citizens are far ahead of where the council is. If you, I think if you review the history, you'll see why we're so frustrated with our city council, and reluctant to support half-measures like what's proposed in this framework. I encourage you to use this public input process to really seek to address the problems of the citizens. You know, our issues are pay-to-play, and whether our government is being bought and sold. That's the issue, it's not necessarily transparency so much. So I want to specifically call your attention to six deficiencies that I see in the current proposal. First of all, there are no caps on contributions to political campaigns. Again, even though those were authorized in 1994 charter amendment, they were never enacted by council, and we know it's not in the incumbent's best interests to propose things that make elections more fair, but it's in the citizens' best interests, and we want that. Second, there's no mention of publicly funded campaigns. Again, citizens are ahead of council. In 2014, council rejected 16,000 petition signatures in support of a vote on publicly financed elections. Last August, we, the coalition submitted another petition for a five-to-one publicly funded match for small donors. We've given you the political space to act. We want this. Council can on Monday vote to put this on the ballot and let the people decide on what to do. I don't see why it's not a part of this legislation. Third, there's no prohibition on revolving door activities. At the federal and the state level, both have such prohibitions, and Columbus should. Fourth, there's no provision for oversight of campaign finance or ethics law. Other cities have independent commissions of various, varying scopes, so by way of, for example, Austin, Pittsburgh, Miami-Dade, San Francisco, Chicago, Boston, and LA. It won't solve all the problems, but will help to build public trust, and public trust is important, as Council President Klein mentioned in his opening comments. The nine, fifth, the nine reports required in an election year hurts challengers who typically don't have established campaigns and elections, accountants and lawyers. It adds administration complexity, but challengers are not the issue. The issue is whether incumbents are engaged in pay-to-play. Additional reporting also allows for the incumbents to intimidate challenger contributors. Bill Todd in 2007 and Demetri Stanley in 2015, both said that their contributors were being intimidated. You know, such acts are repressive and should be outlawed, and that's what should be in this legislation. If you want to increase reporting, it should be limited to incumbents only in an election year. Six, online database.
Mr. Beard, could you wrap up your comments?
Yeah, real quick, yeah. The online reporting, the online database of campaign financing is a good thing, except you condition it on support with the Board of Elections. It should be done by the city regardless. Require city candidates to file electronically with the city. In reality, this could be done by next Thursday. What you're doing is conditioning it on working with the Board of Elections. I think that adds unnecessary delay to this proposal, and gives you an excuse not to get it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. Any, go ahead, Mr. Sensiano.
Thank you, President Klein, Mr. Beard. So, I mean, you start off with the cap on contributions. So, you know, we had a cap at the State House, we have a cap at the federal level. They're raising a lot more money, and so just curious why you see caps as being an actual solution. As long as there's transparency and it's being reported, I think that's what's most key. You know, if money is being raised, that is being clear, the public can get a hold of it. My concern with caps is kind of what goes on, that it's being somewhat hidden, that yes, you can give up to a certain amount at the state level, but there's other ways to go. I believe, you know, someone about 10 can give a maximum contribution and do occasionally. And I don't know if putting a cap in law is really that solution, and just curious how you balance that out, where you can go find this information now, where, you know, at different levels of government where there are caps, it isn't nearly as clear as what we have at the city.
That's a good point. Again, you know, this is the context of a whole bunch of things that need to happen. There's no silver bullet, as I'm sure you know. What we think is caps are one reason. You know, the question for voters is, are our politicians being bought? So when Les Wexner gives $30,000 to now Mayor Ginter, does that mean something? When the Edwards give $42,000 to council president, or now Mayor Ginter, does that mean something? That's the question for us, the citizens. It's, you know, do people, are people buying our public officials? And caps are important in that regard.
Follow up on the number three, the revolving door prohibition. Hasn't the state Supreme Court come out and said you can't have that prohibition, that an individual can't be prevented from seeking? I think it was a First Amendment piece. I know there was prohibition at the state level, got struck down.
I don't know. I would love to see discussion of that on council floors, though.
On deficiency four, on the different ethics commissions that you raise, is there a statewide Texas Ethics Commission? Is there a statewide Massachusetts, Los Angeles? I mean, we fall under the Ohio Ethics Commission. So while there is not a specific city, Columbus one, there is an entity down the street that we go to, that we report to. Just curious, when you cite those other cities, is that an apples-to-apples comparison in terms of what other levels that they report to?
I think having that expert, having that expert in here would help answer that question. I can tell you anecdotally, I've looked at some, I think in Texas, I think there was a state and a, and a local official, a board. I can't tell you definitively at this point, but I think having that expert would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Sensiano. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Beard? Thank you, Mr. Beard.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dana Maysner. Welcome back to council, Mr. Maysner.
Good afternoon, council. Dana Maysner with the Bronzeville Neighborhood Association, and I'm also sitting on the Near East Area Commission. And as one of our panelists said here, I've talked about the menu for the ethics. I think we need to expand that discussion a little bit, and I realize it's not in the legislation, but there's several key things. One in particular was brought up by Mr. Jonathan Beard, that's the pay-to-play, in particular dealing with construction documents, contracts. And for the last 16 years, that has been a major issue with the Department of Development, with various things going on, with various boards, commissions, authorities, and the like throughout the city. And you can put their first names in front of each one of those categories. And it's been a frustration for many in the construction trades, and many have chose not to deal with that process, but many of those construction firms, many large ones working on very large projects in the city, in enabling, in order to exist, had to play that process with previous Department of Development individuals, who are now gone. We hope we can shed more light on that. Also, we have the issue with the BZA, which was alluded to by this woman, previous speaker, the first one, Board of Zoning Adjustment. That board, how it's appointed, how it operates, and what it does, needs to have more transparency. It needs to have some serious looking into by all concerned parties. The other thing is, the appointment process to all commissions, boards, that, again, those various groups that we all have heard so much about, latest one being the convention situation, needs to have more transparency. The public needs to know how this has gone about, there needs to be some criteria, there needs to be some oversight. The public has to know more about this. The past year has not been a big surprise to many of us, but I think it was a big surprise to many people. But those of us involved in the process knew these things existed. What we're doing here today is a step in the right direction, but I think we need to expand it, and we all know it's not under the Ohio Ethics Commission, so certain things can't take place. But somehow, these other things do need to be addressed, they're out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maysner. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Maysner. I would just, I would just say that I think it's, you're right, that there are more steps that we, that we need to take, and that's exactly what these recommendations, I think it was Dr. Asher who said it, it might have been Rep. Curtin, but that's the point of their recommendation, to bring in an expert and look at, let's, let's not do things piecemeal, but let's, let's benchmark and look at how we do a comprehensive package altogether. So, you know, I don't think you'd find a lot of disagreement.
Any other questions or comments? Our next speaker is Kristin Easterday. Welcome back to council, Ms. Easterday.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President Klein, and members of council, thank you for having me to speak today. I'm Kristin Easterday, Vice President of Government Relations for the Columbus Chamber. And as you may know, the Columbus Chamber represents over 1,300 businesses, the majority of which are within the city of Columbus limits, and nine out of 10 which are small and medium-sized businesses. So first, I'd like to commend you. This is good government, taking steps to ensure that our local ethics laws make Columbus a fair and equitable place to do business. And for that reason, the Columbus Chamber supports your efforts. Second, as you may know, we have amazing businesses here in Columbus, and it is their goal, as well as the chamber's goal, as a not-for-profit, not-for-profit membership association, to be in full compliance with the be in full compliance with the ethics laws. And in order for that to occur, the ethics legislation needs to be easy to understand as well as easy to comply with. A business needs to be able to clearly know where the line is drawn for reportable gifts versus providing a courtesy like a bottle of water to a council member that is touring a small business. While I believe the proposal takes steps to make our ethics policy easier to understand, here are a few additional items to consider. The city should consider providing educational training for the updated version of the ethics rules. Secondly, in regards to the model ethics policies, as we previously mentioned in some comments earlier, 2321.56E, we'd suggest providing additional information on what that means for each office holder. For the potential various, and per my calculations, up to 10 model ethics policies here locally that could be created, we'd encourage uniformity as much as possible, again, so that businesses clearly know the policies and can be compliant. Lastly, I see these steps as initial, and it would encourage us to review our ethics policies on a regular basis moving forward. It would be beneficial to not only regularly evaluate how the changes we make this year might work in practical terms, and how the changes are accomplishing the goals of what we set out to do, but also to have a third-party analysis where we compare our ethics rules to those of our peer metropolitan cities. The Columbus Chamber of Commerce is supportive of council's efforts to strengthen the city's ethics laws, and by taking additional efforts such as those proposed to ensure that our disclosures are more transparent, we are ensuring that Columbus is a fair and equitable place to do business. So thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Easterday. Any questions or comments? Mr. Sensiano.
Thank you, President Klein. And somewhat to the point of seeking clarity, the proposal of Legislative Agent Ordinance Draft talks about yearly thereafter. Given your experiences, is it more helpful to define a certain date that would be kind of that year? Or as I read it currently drafted and as I've kind of digested, they do the initial filing, and then it's up to kind of that was their year, and so that they would come back. Do you think kind of narrowing that scope to some extent, so that everyone starts the year at the same time, would be beneficial? Is that providing a little more of the consistency that you were suggesting? Or-
For the legislative agent disclosure, for myself to register online?
Correct. So if you went and came January 1, then the way I interpret it, your year would begin January 1 the next year. If another entity came March 1, then their year would be March 1. And so I'm concerned about that inconsistency of what the year would encapsulate, would be part of. And so curious if that's another area where you think we could provide a little more consistency.
From my understanding, what I currently, so this is from my experience, is I am actually required to two times a year, at the beginning of the year, and I believe it's the middle of, exactly the middle of the year, to renew my registration with the City of Columbus. So the proposal makes that three times. So really, I get caught up at any point in time, whether it be two times a year or three times a year. We all end up getting on the same cycle eventually.
Any other questions, comments? Do you have any commentary? Ms. Brown?
Just a little thing that I want to kind of agree with and pick up on your point on encouraging uniformity with the ethics policies in the offices. Just going back to my earlier question to Mr. Clark, too, I do see that as potentially something that trips this up, and so I appreciate you saying that, and I would encourage that we clarify, we really clarify in the legislation what we're looking for, because to have 10 different ethics policies is confusing for people that, whether they lobby elected officials or give them just a tour of their business. So I appreciate you saying that and want to echo my support for providing that in the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Easterday?
I think the issue that's being addressed is more prevalent for contract lobbyists as it is for lobbyists of a single agency like the Chamber, because clients may come and go with, for the contract lobbyist. So the sunset and the sunrise window of when that relationship starts could vary depending on the clientele for the individual lobbyist versus always lobbying for the Chamber because you're in-house with the Chamber, always lobbying for Ohio State because you're in-house at Ohio State. So I think it is a point that we should be cognizant of, determine when that does sunrise within the 10 days, as we talked about with Mr. Clark, and then when it does sunset, so that when you're no longer engaged in a lobbying relationship, you're no longer required to register at the city for that particular client as it relates to contract lobbyists. So thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Motil.
President Klein, members of the city council. Joe Motil, I live at 167 West Cook Road. As we all know, the 2015 elections for mayor and city council exposed a variety of allegations and corrupt activities, which led to the proposed ethics legislation in this public hearing. In spite of a registered city lobbyist receiving much of the blame for what occurred, I don't believe he twisted anyone's arm or held a gun to someone's head demanding that they get on a bus and attend a football game in a plush suite in Indianapolis, or that they accept gifts from him, or campaign contributions, or allow him to host a fundraising event on their behalf. I do agree with the lobbyists being required to disclose expenditures and interactions with public officials three times a year. I also feel that any gifts received by a public official or candidate that are required to be reported on the Ohio Ethics Commission's financial disclosure statement, that that disclosure also include the type of gift who gave it and the fair market value of that gift to be reported. In order to protect the public and financial conflicts of definite conflicts of interest, city elected and public officials should not be permitted to take campaign contributions or anything of value from any public union and organizations who are in a bargain agreement with the City of Columbus. This would also include any individuals, developers, organizations, or LLCs that receive tax abatements. Any campaign contributions from these individuals, organizations, that is funneled through a political party's campaign organization, and received by a public official or their campaign committee would also be in violation of the ethics legislation. Incorporating searchable database of campaign contributions and expenditures, I feel is a waste of time and taxpayers' money. This information already is easily accessible with a few simple clicks and typing in the name of a candidate in the Board of Elections website. Another waste of time and effort, I feel, would be to increase campaign finance reports. Current filings that are required of a candidate include an annual pre-primary, primary, post-primary, semi-annual, pre-general, five-day general, post-general reporting. This easily provides sufficient information on campaign contributions and expenditures for the public's viewing during an election cycle. Any additional reporting would be burdensome to those citizens seeking public office that are not affiliated or endorsed by major party organizations. I do not recall in the last 30 years of my involvement with city government, any unethical behavior from a city lobbyist other than this last year. But in order to promote citizens' confidence in our public officials, there should be additional information of lobbyists and their gifts to public officials and limits and restrictions on campaign contributions. The creation of an independent inspector general and additional ethics officers is nothing more than window dressing, and I feel is a waste of taxpayers' money. And I also agree with the gentleman who spoke earlier. There needs to be more oversight and things on, for instance, members of the Board of Zoning Adjustment Development Commission. Those people are appointed by the mayor and so forth, and there were incidents last year where an individual was involved with the mayor in something. And, you know, you all know what's right from wrong and what gives the appearance of a conflict of interest, and I think that, you know, there's, I don't want to see a Department of Ethics created here. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' dollars, and I expect our elected officials to do what's right, and I think you all know what the appearance of impropriety means. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Motil. Any questions for Mr. Motil?
Thank you.
So this is the final speaker. If anyone wishes to sign up that hasn't had the opportunity to do so, please grab a blue speaker slip and fill it out. But our final speaker is Michelle Moyer. Is Ms. Moyer here? One more time, Michelle Moyer, are you here? Let the record reflect that Ms. Moyer is not present. Any other speakers? I don't see anyone rushing over to the blue slips. Any closing comments from my colleagues? Comments? President Protem Tyson.
Thank you, President Klein. First of all, I do want to thank you and the mayor, and certainly this body, for, in working with Dr. Asher, Representative Curtin, and certainly Mr. Clark. Today was an opportunity for us to hear about legislation that we could possibly enact in order to continue to think about the ethics issues within our community and to be able to show transparency. And so, but this hearing has done, President Klein, has allowed individuals to come up and share their comments regarding ethics in the City of Columbus. And I appreciate the opportunity for them, the hearing their thoughts and comments, and certainly after hearing those, obviously some are definitely in agreement with what's proposed here, but also certainly hearing the different thoughts and comments. I think that really goes to the point that Dr. Asher and Mr. Curtin have suggested that we probably need to have someone to be looking at this ethics on an ongoing basis and seeing what's going on across the country. And so hopefully, just based upon the comments that the individuals have made, based upon what this panel has shared, that that would be something that I would certainly, you know, would be one to endorse and for that to take place here. So, but again, this is a start, and we can't do everything in three pieces of legislation, but I think the consensus is that we want to do more. And so, thank you for, President Klein, for your work and your team's work on this.
Any other questions or comments?
I just have one final question for both Dr. Asher and Representative Curtin, because this is something that, as I noted at the beginning of the hearing, that we take very seriously, and I'm not particularly interested in doing something that's simply window dressing to address any sort of perception problems that are here at City Hall. So in your opinion, Representative Curtin, and in your opinion, Dr. Asher, is this substantive legislation that moves the city ethics policies forward to make a difference in accountability and transparency in our city government? You can expound, yes or no answer. I just want to make sure that what we're doing here is in your belief, as in you're not tied to City Hall, you're not related to anyone in City Hall, you're great members of our community that have been involved in state and local, in some instances, federal politics for many, many years. Are we moving the ball forward and are we making a difference by enacting these three proposals, if we do enact them?
Thank you, Council President Klein, members of council. It's my personal belief that these three measures are substantive and that they do move the ball forward. I believe the news of the last year and a half has captured the interest of the community as it should. Many questions have been raised about the ethical climate in Columbus, some fair, some unfair. I believe that these three policy proposals are a good faith response, and in substance, in whole, do increase transparency, do increase accountability. I do think, and this is a point I think Ms. Easterday made, and perhaps Mr. Motil, some of this can get into very de minimis things. Representative Sensiano and I have served at the State House together. Some of these state ethics rules are ridiculous in terms of what they require, de minimis reporting, fairly non-consequential things, which are a disincentive for people to serve. And I would, if council and administration do go down the path of retaining an outside expert who can bring sort of a national perspective to best practices at the municipal level, you know, one of the questions I would have if I were in your place is, you know, separate the most substantive things that we all agree upon are the issues we have to control for. And let's not have too much de minimis reporting. Whether it's, you know, two reports in a given period, or three reports or four, isn't as important as, I think, real-time accountability, real-time transparency, real-time access. And, I mean, just speaking for myself, I've been frustrated with sort of the gotcha mentality that exists at the state level on some of the de minimis stuff that is required, that really doesn't amount to much. And I think Tony Bledsoe, if you wanted to access him at some point, the Legislative Inspector General, who has had that position for some time, would agree. We've had conversations, and as I fill out my annual reports and go on to the nth degree to fill out stuff that doesn't matter, my umpiring fees, for example, at, you know, page after page after page of $30 from Gehanna High School, $50 from Upper Arlington High School, why does that matter? It really doesn't, and it's not what the public cares about. So one of the questions I would have is, how do we focus on the big stuff and not get people tripped over the de minimis stuff?
These proposals are a very good start. And the timeliness, how quickly these have been formulated, how responsive people have been to concerns, I think that's very admirable. But this is really the beginning of a discussion and a review, and I don't think this is the endpoint. So it really is the question, what should be done next? And I don't think you want to just jump into responding to this particular concern or that particular concern. I think you want to make sure that you can see the broader picture and what's happening elsewhere. And just one example, I heard Mr. Beard's proposal about a cap, and I heard Council Member Sensiano's response, and it would be nice to know if there are other communities that have had, put in caps, how that's worked. Because we know at the state and national level that when you put in caps, money finds its way through other pathways, and that may actually be a worse system. Now, so I think it'd be nice to know how these things have worked in other communities, if other communities, if there are a lot of communities like that. So I think where we are today, very good set of proposals, but again, I would hope that moving forward, that we in fact could be looking at related topics and doing this from a basis of information, rather than responding to this accusation or that criticism, that we really can look at it in a more holistic way.
Well, let me thank-
And I volunteer my curtain to keep on working on this.
You're volunteering for what?
To keep-
To keep working on it?
Yes.
Well, let me thank you again publicly, Dr. Asher, Representative Curtin. Thank you, Mr. Clark, for your help and input, as well as a public recognition to Mr. Oswald, who has helped city council forge us to the path that we are now. Any other questions or comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, that will conclude our hearing on the Rules and Reference Committee regarding the proposed ethics reform package presented to the city council. Thank you.